Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council of Temple City to order. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chen.
Here.
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem U.
Here.
Mayor Chavez.
Here.
Okay, tonight, our invocation will be provided by Jerry Jambezi in honor of one of her cleaners and draperies located at 9136 Las Tunas Drive. And so after the invocation, please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. Bow with me in prayer, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight to ask for your blessing upon this council meeting tonight. I pray that you would anoint our mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members with the necessary wisdom for the decisions set before them tonight. There are many good things happening such as street paving, Live Oak Park Playground renovations, streetscaping improvements, and we look forward to another High Autumn Festival this weekend. With all these good things, our hearts are also saddened with the recent events. We mourn the loss of Carl Koski, who served as city manager for 25 years. Carl was a kind professional with a gentle spirit. When you entered his office, there was no mistake that he loved Temple City and the Air Force. He was instrumental in the amenities that we enjoy today. He will be greatly missed, and we grieve along with his son, Mike. Our community was also shaken with the passing of 10-year-old Sabrina Arguletta, who had just entered the fifth grade at Longden Elementary School. Her mother, Jennifer, was also killed and left Ray Senior with injuries. They left this earth on Saturday, August 17th, at 1:00 p.m. on Temple City Boulevard. This was a senseless act by a DUI driver who decided to have a few drinks and then use a 3,000-pound vehicle as a weapon of death and destruction. Some may call this an accident, but Lord forgive me, this was murder. Raimondo Arguletta and his son Ray Junior are left without a mother, aspiring to be a librarian, a devoted wife, and a wonderful daughter, who was also on the Camellia Festival Royal Court in 2021. She was a princess in every sense of the word with her bright smile and spirit. Lord, I would ask that you would comfort the immediate family, our Temple City family, and the Longden families during this difficult time. I ask all of this in your name and for your glory. Amen.
Okay, please face the flag, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now move on to item number four. Excuse me, item number five, ceremonial matters. There aren't none this evening. We will now move on to item six, public comments. Not listed on the agenda. City Council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address the city council is highlighted on the first page of this agenda. And I have one speaker request form, Mr. Jeff Gordon. Mr. Gordon, would you like to come up to the podium?
Do it now?
Yes, please.
Sure. Where do you want me to stand?
Right at the podium where the microphone is.
Yeah, so, thanks for letting me speak.
Sure.
I don't know if this subject matter is really new or not, but I did want to raise it. And sheriff right here is aware of it. He actually helped us when the issue occurred. But we live on Olima. These are my neighbors right here. And we live close to the high school. Probably the past two years, we've seen an increase in burglary crime happening. This is a specific type of burglary crime that happens midweek. They show up. They're coming from other cities. They usually smash and grab. I'm home all day, working from home, but a lot of other people, we have neighbors that have been hit several times. They're not really here to speak for themselves. And so, you know, it's getting to a point where it seems to be increasing in frequency. It seems to be every three months or so it keeps happening, and it happens along our street. Now, I'm sure it happens in other places in Temple City as well. We're not, this isn't unique to us. I'm aware of that. But I think this is more of just raising it for awareness, making sure that you guys are aware. I don't know what kind of reporting you get on crime and how often it's looked into. You have a lot on your plates, obviously. But we just really want this as kind of a point of awareness, to make sure you guys are aware if there are other things that can be done to help prevent this. Budgetary, tactical, things that we can do, we're totally open, and we want to support that. You know, I don't need to go into the, you know, the rhetoric of what a great community Temple City is and all that stuff. We all know that. We all live here. We all like the place and don't want it to, don't want it to get to a point where this becomes too commonplace, right? And so, I do want to just kind of raise it. I kind of leave it really up to you guys for ideas because you've dealt with this before. You've been dealing with this probably for many years. For me, it's kind of new, coming here and raising this to you guys, but you, you know, are the ones that can pull the strings and potentially make things happen to lessen the frequency of this and maybe even bring it down entirely. Guys, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to what I'm saying or add more context specifically.
Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am. If you want to say something, you'll need to fill out a speaker request form and then come up to the podium.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of that. Sorry.
Yeah, you can do that afterwards. But if you want to speak, please come up here.
It was my bad. I'm the one that called her out.
That's okay. We're happy to hear from her.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And so it's more of, and I kind of, I don't know if this is a conver- I don't know the forum. Like, is this a conversation we have right here and now, and here are things we can do? Is this something we take up later? Or is it, you know, become an agenda that we talk about?
Well, just so you know, because of where we're at in the, in the agenda, this is what we call our public comments, where we hear public comments from persons like yourselves.
Right.
Because it's not on the agenda, we can't really discuss it or talk about it. That has to be an item that's on the agenda. But what I would tell you as well is that we do meet with our sheriffs once a month. It's usually the last Wednesday of each month at 7:00 in the morning. We meet right here and right below us in the community center. And we go over the statistics, and we talk about crimes and what's being done and what isn't being done. So that would be a good forum to bring those types of things up as well. And then also, I don't know if you've ever attended any of our Neighborhood Watch meetings. We have those once a month also. And there's actually, I believe we've already had it, though there was one at Temple City High School. But throughout, throughout the city, we try to put them in different areas of the city so everybody has a chance. But certainly, you can go to any of them. When is our next one coming up? It's this month, I know, and it's going to be where? Do you know right now?
Clemmson.
We'll look it up.
Clemmson.
Clemmson? Is it, is it this, the last one, this month?
No, no, one more.
Usually Clemmson is the last one, but, so it's not this year. Okay, so, so our next meeting will be, we'll get the date for you, but it'll be at Clemmson School, which is over on the east side of town.
Yeah.
You're welcome to come there. We have a lot of our sheriff deputies there. You can speak with them. You know, we do get the crime statistics, and I can tell you that we take these things very seriously, and we try to do whatever we can. I don't need to tell you that we are a relatively safe city, but we're not a perfect city. And so there are crimes that occur, and I know our sheriff department will take that very seriously as well. So yes, we will see what we can do about that. Our crime statistics, although probably not true in your area, have been going down citywide.
Yeah.
And for some reason, there's a problem in that area, but certainly, we can look further into that. And so there are some forums that are available to you, and I would urge you and your neighbors to come to those. And it's more of an informal basis. And then if there's anything further that we need to look at, you can contact our city, our city manager, and if it feels that there's something we need to agendize, we can do that as well.
And we serve you dinner also.
Nice.
We serve you dinner at the Neighborhood Watch, and we serve you breakfast at the sheriff meeting.
Oh, okay. I'll take it.
So here's, you see up on the, on the wall, those are the areas that we've broken down into. And so, the next one is-
Lutheran. So you're over in 10.
Yeah, see, I told you, Jerry. Clemmson's always the last one. Bethlehem Lutheran on Halifax. That is our next one on September, what is it, 19?
My 19.
Yeah, and then we have, and then we have another one on October 17th. That's at Clemmson School. We go over not only crime statistics, but issues and how to keep, what to do to keep our neighborhoods safer.
Yeah.
So that would certainly be something that I would urge you to attend.
That would be great.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay.
So I appreciate it and how you're aware, and, you know, we'll definitely follow up.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into it, and we'll bring this subject up. Certainly, if you're not there, we'll bring it up at our next meetings as well.
Yeah, no, I'll make it, you know, and the dinner.
Okay.
Cool.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming.
This could be found on the website, too.
Yes, it's on our website, yes. Okay, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, are there any other, any others that want to make public comments at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comments. We will now move on to item seven, our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar may be approved in sync with motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a motion?
Or anybody wish to approve?
Just one question, Brian, before I go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Brian, on the consent calendar-
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't talk about the local court meeting. Is that because it's-
It was the meeting after.
It was the meeting after.
It was the meeting after, yes.
So I don't think-
Okay, all right. That, can we have a motion?
A motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second? We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem U.
Yes.
Mayor Chavez.
Yes. Okay, we'll now move on to item number eight, our public hearing for the adoption of resolution number 24-5773, amending planning services fees, amending the planning services fee schedule within the master fees and fine schedule for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. This is a correction. There was an oversight in the prior fee resolution that was adopted during the budget process, which included a 3% cost of living adjustment. We did not pass that along in the schedule, so no one was overpaying for fees, but we lost that, a little less than $1,000 worth of fees that we would have corrected. This corrects the, and puts the proper fee schedule on, and that's what we can charge, because we cannot charge more than what the council has adopted on the fee schedule. So with that oversight, this will correct that.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, any other questions you may have?
All right. Does any council members have any questions?
I just want to say, I thought you said 3%, right, in section four.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem U. It's a 4% adjustment.
Good catch. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I will open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I will close public hearing. Any final council questions or comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt resolution number 24-5773, amending the master fee and fine schedule for fiscal year 2024, 2025, with updated fees for planning services.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem U.
Yes.
Mayor Chavez.
Yes. Thank you. We will move on to item nine, unfinished business. There is none. New business, none. Item 11, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, very briefly. Happy to meet with the folks on Olima and deal with, deal with the issues that they're dealing with. I know our dedicated team has had some contact with them, and are, I'm trying to employ some strategies now, but we'll, we'll be happy to work. But that's what our Neighborhood Watch program and everything is all about, a connection between our law enforcement staff and the community. So happy to meet and try our best to mitigate the crime that does happen in the city. As you know, Ahai Olima Festival, our partners at World Journal will be here this weekend. We will be shutting down Las Tunas from Kaufman to Golden West for a fun-filled weekend of activities.
When does that closure begin?
That closure will begin Friday morning. So they tried to minimize it. Our partners at World Journal are really cognizant of the impacts that that creates, so they really, they really hustle. And this is our fourth year with our partners at World Journal, and they're quite excellent, and they're excellent producers of events. So, and we, we're happy to have that partnership with them.
You said Friday morning or Saturday morning?
Friday morning.
Friday morning?
Yeah.
And it'll be open Sunday night?
More like early Monday morning. Hopefully before commute, before commute time. And our-
Same closure as the Camellia Festival.
Same exact footprint as what you see for the Camellia Festival as well. So, lastly, just with the heat, our cooling centers are available. Our senior lunch program is always active, so that's where a lot of our seniors go. Just a reminder to our seniors, too, that in the heat, if you need meals, we have our to-go meals as well throughout the year. So get there, try to get there early if you can, but that cooling center is available to our vulnerable populations who may need it.
Do we know the hours right now of the cooling centers?
The operation hours of the cooling centers are the same operation hours as Live Oak Park. It's 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
Talk-
Yes, go ahead.
I recall, it's been a few years that we had a cooling center actually in here for people who lived, seniors in this area. Also, do you recall when we did that?
I kind of recall that, yes.
So I'm wondering, is there a thought about possibly doing that, or are we, how are some of the seniors getting to the park? Are they using Dial-A-Ride?
So those who are mobility challenged in terms of not having a car, can't drive, a lot of them are with part of the Dial-A-Ride program, so a lot of them are getting there. We haven't gotten any requests for anything closer or any other issues. So if those requests come in, I mean, City Hall is open, you know, Monday through Friday. Won't mind people hanging out in the lobby. You just hear about fun things like building permits and whatnot. But-
I know when they did it here, I came just to see how it was going, and they had a movie going on, and some people were asleep in the back, but everybody was thrilled that they were able to come here.
Yeah.
Because it was this hot then.
Yeah.
Perhaps if we get a request or there's issues, we can look into that. Yeah, not a bad idea.
That's it for me, Mayor Chavez.
Thank you. Okay, update from Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Murphy.
Sure. This, this actually came to my attention this afternoon. Senate Bill 450, which deals with SB 9 lot splits and duplexes, was revived late last week. It had been put in sort of a suspension file or an inactive file, and the, the author, Senator Atkins, revived it. League of California Cities is recommending that cities consider letters of opposition to this. There are two big items in it. There are a lot of details in terms of what it changes for these lot splits and duplexes. One big item that the league has issues with is a processing, a new processing rule, which is that cities would have 60 days to approve or deny an SB 9 development, and a denial would have to have a full explanation of why the SB 9 development cannot be approved, and how to correct all deficiencies so as to get approval on the next application. As, as the league's sort of draft letter says, that's a potentially huge cost to cities. That could cost, you know, a whole planner if people really started pushing these, these types of developments, because you have to act fast, and you have to be incredibly thorough, and anything you miss, you can't then go back later and say, well, wait, you're still, still not in compliance. So it's a potential cost to cities that doesn't seem to be fully understood by, by the senator that's sponsoring the bill. The second aspect that's troublesome is that cities, when they are reviewing and taking action on these, they have to do so ministerially, which we already have to. But the bill would limit cities to not using any objective standards that are applied differently than they're applied to other developments allowed in the zone. And as, as the league said, that, that sort of misses the point that a duplex in a single-family zone might have different impacts. Certainly, it would be larger. There might be lot line issues. There could be massing issues. And so even in using objective standards, it's hard to even know what it would mean to say that we're applying objective standards in a uniform way to two units on a lot that's been cut in half versus one unit on a lot that's, it's natural or, you know, pre-existing size. So because of that, the league is requesting that we at least consider a letter of opposition. I think the city manager may have some, you know, one-on-one discussions, and if it seems we have a desire to do that, that we can bring that back on consent at your next meeting. But I wanted to raise that today. You may be hearing it on the news. You know, anytime the sort of small, small unit housing makes the news, I'd rather you hear it from me before you hear it from Channel 9 or Channel 5. So any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I do have a quick question. So the bill has been revived, and do you know what stage is at?
I know, I believe it's still in committee.
Still in committee.
I believe it is, yes.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much for that report. We will now move on to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Does anybody have any reports to offer? I don't think we've been pretty, pretty quiet over the summer with these different standing committee meetings and ad hocks. So we'll now move on to item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Start to my left, Councilmember Chen.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
I just want to say that I was looking forward to the High Autumn Festival. I had a scheduling issue, so I'm unfortunately unable to make it this year. But I do want to thank our partners at World Journal for continuing to work with us. I was particularly excited this year because, partly because of the closure, which would allow the footprint of the High Autumn Festival to kind of revert back to what it originally started out, out as. So, so to me, that's, it's a good thing, because it shows that a lot of programming, you know, we, we don't think of COVID as, COVID was, was four years ago, and yet you still see kind of this resuscitation of programming to get back to where we were before. So I'm, I'm excited to see that, and hope everyone has a, has a great time.
We'll give them your best.
Thank you. And, and I just want to say one more comment to the gentleman that addressed us today. I appreciate you coming to us and letting us know. The closest to a burglary that occurred was, to me, was my next-door neighbor about maybe two years ago. So it is something that strikes at our neighborhood in ways that we, we wish it didn't. But as the mayor said, I think we are fully committed to trying to do everything we can to make Temple City the safest possible neighborhood for our families and our friends. And I have the utmost confidence in our, in our sheriffs, our dedicated team, in doing everything they can. They have a pretty large arsenal of resources that they can kind of throw at a problem. But sometimes with crime, it's just, you know, if someone had the magic silver bullet for crime, they'd be a billionaire by now. But it's a collaborative effort, and, you know, the Neighborhood Watch meetings have always been pretty good at conveying this information that sometimes we on council might take for granted because we hear it all the time. But we appreciate anyone who comes forward and says, hey, I need some help. I'd like some answers. I'd like to know more about what I can do. And we say that at our Neighborhood Watch meetings. It's not, it's not all on law enforcement to take care of everything. It really, truly is a collaborative effort between the community and law enforcement. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Just a couple of things. I, too, want to thank you for coming out, and we will have time in, when is it, when we look at the budget again?
Midyear.
Midyear budget. So during that time, we always look and take public safety into consideration. It is always one of our top priorities in the city. And so when we do that, we've, last year, we appropriated more funding for overtime. And I think now the challenge is that our sheriff department is struggling to have enough sheriffs come just like LA with securing officers for, excuse me, LAPD. So I think there's, there's just multiple challenges. But I so appreciate that when you came up, you said, you know, we want to know what we can do also. And I think that's the key. If we have more neighbors like you who are willing to come forward and then make the plea that it, we're in this together, it really shows that you care and your neighbors took the time to come. So I thank them also. Unfortunately, I guess it was the past Director of Health, Dr. Fauci, who got West Nile virus. And so for, for directors on mosquito and vector control, it helps us gain awareness. I mean, nobody wanted to see him sick, but I think it was on the news quite a bit that Dr. Fauci got West Nile virus, and he got bit by a mosquito in his backyard. So he was pretty sick, but fortunately, he knew enough to get himself to the doctors and say, I got bit by a mosquito. I think I have symptoms of West Nile virus. So keep that in mind, that especially with this heat, the mosquitoes love it. And people have little pools. I put one out for my dog. And as much as I preach about, you know, dumping the water, I totally forgot, because he was playing in the water still at 9:00 at night. And then I left it out this morning. So first thing, I drained that water. So remember to not keep still standing water, if you can. Just remember to, to drain it. But other than that, I'm looking forward to a very hot day at the Autumn Festival, but it should be nice at night. So hopefully, a lot of people who miss the daytime will come out in the evening and enjoy it.
It's not going to feel like autumn weather, I don't think.
It's not.
Yeah.
No boots.
It's High Summer Festival.
High Summer Festival, maybe. Well, thank you. Okay, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I just want to also address our constituents' concern. And I live in my house for, or at least same location, over 30 years, and unfortunately, I had two burglary. So I, I know, I know how you feel. And luckily, they were separated by 30 years, but still, it's not unsettling. And so I definitely can sympathize and understand where you were. But unfortunately, you know, having sit on this side of the fence as well as, as a council member, there's only so many things. So what we want to do is somewhat limited, unfortunately. A lot of that's just general economic climate. You know, they're, these folks don't, they're not from our city. Unfortunately, they try to take advantage of the perhaps economic disparity between them and us. And so, but, but, but we take what you said very seriously, and being a victim of burglary myself, so we'll definitely want to revisit, see what we can do, see if we can help the situation a little bit. So, and I, too, looking forward to the High Summer Festival, I guess. But, but I, maybe I have a question for our city manager. I remember many, many years ago, we started this High Autumn Festival. It was also 102. We were able to put some misters across here, and they were like something that we, we rented? I don't know. Maybe, maybe a city manager can look through that.
Take a look at it, sir.
Yeah.
I wonder if the health laws, healthcare laws have changed.
I think we're good on that front, sir. Food is one thing, and one another thing, but misters, I think, will be all right.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, those are, those are my two comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess, Mr. Gordon, I would be remiss by not also thanking you for coming this evening. It's all my colleagues have as well. But I would definitely urge you to try to attend our Neighborhood Watch, our sheriff's meeting that we meet once a month. And I will make it a point to ask our city manager to perhaps provide us with a little bit more information as to what exactly- as to what exactly is happening on your street and in your area. Because frankly, I can't recall a particular, a particular crime spree occurring on that street or that area that's come to our attention. So I'm glad you have brought it to our attention. And definitely, we will look into that and see what's happening there and what we can do about getting it fixed. Okay? All right. Couple of things. We forgot to mention with the High Autumn Festival, we also have our kickoff dinner for Camellia Festival this Saturday as well, Saturday evening. So hopefully, some of you may be attending that. And then I think we have a movie night Saturday night in the park.
In conjunction with World Journal and as one of the parts of...
So a lot going on Saturday.
We got a lot going on on Saturday.
Yeah, a lot going on on Saturday, so it's going to be a busy time. I had the opportunity to attend, as Jerry mentioned earlier, the memorial service for Sabrina. It's Arggetta, I think, not Argoletta. Arggetta.
Arggetta.
By the way, yeah, Arggetna. At Longden, and very nice event. I want to thank Principal Bender for putting that on. And of course, Dad, Ray Arggetta, was there and gave some nice words. And, you know, as all of us as parents, certainly can feel the, you know, the stress and the, you know, anguish that he's probably going through at this point in time. And, you know, not to, of course, we knew Sabrina as part of our Camellia Festival, but seem to forget her mother also passed away in this accident as well, so very tragic event. Jerry, I know, took a lot of photos today, and I missed the drone. Did you have a drone? I didn't, I, you didn't have it while I was there, I think. You brought it out later? Yeah. So the kids, just so you know, the, the fifth grade class at Longden came out and they drew notes and chalk on the cement, you know, and expressed their feelings to Sabrina in heaven. And that was a very nice, nice event, so. Thank you for doing that. Lastly, Citizens Academy. We've talked about that, I know, before. And I would like to maybe have our city manager put that on his list of things to do and maybe an update of where we stand. I know in our personal talks, we were talking about bringing it back in somewhat abbreviated form, perhaps. I don't know if that's a fair enough term, but, but somehow, because I, I know I have had people in the community also ask about that. We haven't done it. How long, when was the last time we did our Citizens Academy? Do you even remember?
We did a modified one during COVID.
During COVID, we did?
Yeah, it was all online.
Been a few years, yeah. So I, I would like to see, bring something back in that regard. I think it's very helpful. And certainly, we always use that as a springboard to our future commissioner positions, I think helped out as well. Maybe we can get some information coming to us on that as well. And with that, that's all I have tonight. So we will now move on to item 15. Any additional public comments on the, not listed on the agenda? Jerry, would you like to get up?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gordon's getting quite a bit of attention tonight, but I'd just like to remind him and also the audience with a shameless plug, go to templecityphotos.com and you can view all the videos from the prior Neighborhood Watch meetings.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for saying that.
So don't waste the next two weeks before you get to the next one. Take a look at that video when you get home tonight, and you'll learn some great stuff. Okay?
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah.
Thanks for videotaping those as well. Okay, with that, I will close, close public comments. Before we adjourn, unfortunately, this is becoming more and more common, but I would certainly like to close this meeting in memory of Carl Koski, as Jerry said earlier. Mr. Koski was our city manager for 25 years, from 1965 through 1990. I didn't know Mr. Koski. I actually moved to Temple City in 1990. I know Councilmember Sternquist knew him. I think we all know his son, of course, Mike Koski, who worked with Parks and Recreation for many years and was very proud of his father, father, and would talk about him many times. We even, if you go around the city at different venues, you can see Carl's name on certain things as well. In fact, I think his name is out here on City Hall, I think, on one of our plaques. But he also served as grand marshal, honorary grand marshal for the Camellia Festival back in 1995. So unfortunately, Carl passed away on August 30th. And his funeral services will be held tomorrow in Laguna Beach. I think we have that information at City Hall if you need that. But, you know, certainly, our prayers and our thoughts go out to Mike and his siblings and the entire Koski family. And, you know, we want to say rest in peace, of course. And above all, thank you, Carl, for your service to the city of Temple City. To serve in any capacity for 25 years is, is quite a feat. You know, city manager, there's the old saying, you're three votes away from looking for a new job, right? Sorry, Brian. But he obviously survived that for 25 years, and that's quite an achievement. And from what I understand, he was a pretty great man. Do you want to share your story with him real quick?
Carl Koski is one of the reasons I'm sitting here today. He was, I think my daughter Brittany, who's 41, was seven years old at the time. And we wanted to build a new house in Temple City. And I wanted to know how to do it. And my daughter had drawn a picture of a two-story home and called it a mansion. And she came with me into his office, and I introduced Brittany to him. And he was a very gentleman, and he said, you can't build that house in Temple City. He said, but if you want to try, you can go and get a variance and go to the Planning Commission. So I went to the Planning Commission. And after six months of going to Planning Commission meetings to see what to say and what not to say, and it was really how I got involved in city government. So it was Carl. And then during the building process, I was able to build the house 40-some years ago. And I would come and stop by occasionally and just talk to Carl and let him know how the process was going. But he had a very kind, gentle spirit.
Good.
Very much like our Brian Cook.
Yeah, of course. Very easygoing.
Very easygoing.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Yes.
Of course, today, that second story wouldn't even be blinked at, right?
We won't.
You were before your time. Okay. Well, with that, we are adjourned.